To order the virtual meeting of the Jeffersonville Common Council. It is June 15th, just at 7:00 P. M. We'll have a roll call of members, please.
Counselperson White.
Do you have your body going?
Present.
Come on mute.
Come on mute.
Just a second. There we go.
Counselperson White.
Present.
Counselperson Brown. Counselperson Byrne.
Present.
Counselperson Parrish.
Parrish.
Here.
Here.
Vice President Maples.
Here. Matt, are you experiencing that feedback coming from your end?
Counselperson Croft.
Here.
Counselperson Webb.
Here.
Counselperson Owen.
Present.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Here.
Counselperson Ellis.
Present.
Let the record reflect that we have all council members on the meeting.
All right, everybody's present. Sorry about that feedback. Couple more of us as the governor's restrictions lift, a couple more of us can be in the same rooms. We'll go through it with our invocation, Mr. Ellis, if you would lead us.
Yes. Let us bow our heads in prayer, please. Most gracious God, our Lord, our Savior, our everything, Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that you've given us. We thank you for the blessings that you've put upon our city. We ask that you continue to bless all the workers within our city, our fire department, our police department, our sanitation department, and each and every one of us that depends upon you for our lives, our living, our families. Lord, look out for our city, look out for us, and grant us the wisdom to do your will. Let your will be done in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and our Savior. Amen.
Amen. Right, minutes to be approved. We have minutes from the regular proceedings of June the first, 2020. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maples, second, Mr. Croft. Let's go.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Byrne.
Aye.
Counselperson Parrish.
Aye.
Counselperson Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counselperson Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
All right. Approval of the agenda.
No changes, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maples, second, Mr. Burns. Let's go.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Byrne.
Aye.
Counselperson Parrish.
Aye.
Counselperson Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counselperson Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Claims to be approved. We have civil city claims in the amount of four hundred and nine thousand, four ninety-seven, seven cents. Was there any changes, Heather?
No, that's four hundred and ninety thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seven cents.
Four zero nine?
Four nine zero.
Okay, I have the wrong number then on my sheet.
It's.
Can you say it again, please?
It's four hundred and ninety thousand, forty, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seven cents. Four nine zero.
Four nine zero, four nine seven point zero seven. Is that the number that you all have on the docket?
No.
No. The docket has four zero nine. Is that what you have on the?
Uh, do you have that?
Four nine. Yeah, we're fine, Heather.
Okay, good, okay.
I sent them wrong.
It was just incorrectly printed on the agenda. The actual docket here is correct.
Okay.
All right. You have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Croft and second by Mr. Burns. Let's go.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Byrne.
Aye.
Counselperson Parrish.
Aye.
Counselperson Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counselperson Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Okay, we have parks claims in the amount of ninety-three thousand, six hundred and five dollars and fifty-nine cents.
There's no additions, motion to approve.
Sorry.
Motion by Mr. Maples and a second by Mr. Hawkins.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Byrne.
Aye.
Counselperson Parrish.
Aye.
Counselperson Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Croft.
Aye.
Counselperson Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
All right, report of the clerk?
None.
Okay. We don't have any unfinished business from our previous meeting. We'll go straight to new business where we have burst up Wendy Danchester with One Southern Indiana's annual economic update.
Good evening. Thank you so much, councilmen and the entire council. We're glad to be here. I'm going to give a brief introduction and then I'm going to turn it over to Matt Hall, who I believe is also on the Zoom. This is what we typically do in June is that to come and present to you what economic development activity the city of Jeffersonville has seen that has been involved with, that One Southern Indiana has been involved with in the previous calendar year. So some of this information by June seems a little bit dated, but it doesn't really hurt to go back to what we would call the good old days in 2019, when things were stable and a little more predictable and we were able to talk about what the presentation is entitled, our partnership. It is a partnership for progress and Matt Hall, as you all know, I brag on Matt Hall every chance I get because he's been doing economic development in these communities for 30 years now. He was just not, just awarded in the last two months, he was named one of the top 50 economic developers in North America. So we've always known that at One Southern Indiana, but now finally the rest of the country is taking note. But Matt Hall's been doing a great job. I'm going to let him give the presentation and then we'll follow up with a summary of the Jeffersonville Sustains Loan Program. So Matt, why don't you go ahead?
Sure. So thanks, Wendy, for that generous introduction. I assume everyone can hear me and see me. I'm going to jump into this report from 2019. Please feel free to stop me and ask any questions and I'll ask for questions at the end as well. But if you have the report in front of you, I'm going to go to page two, which is a recap of the project announcements we had in 2019, as Wendy suggested. And you will see, and these are for Jeffersonville only. On page two here, this is for only Jeffersonville announcements. We had six announcements last year. Four of those were new companies to Jeffersonville for the first time. And there we go. So you'll see four of those are new companies to Jeffersonville for the first time. Two of those were expansion projects of existing companies in Jeffersonville. And collectively, those six projects are going to create over 1,000 new jobs, 1,058 to be exact. The annual payroll created by those 1,000 jobs will add 49.1 million dollars annually into the local economy. And you will see that those six projects collectively will invest over 123 billion dollars in new taxable capital through their projects. And on page three, that shows you what those projects are, who those companies are. And some of those you may recognize as existing companies and some are new. Pharma Core was certainly a big announcement that we had. Ametral did an expansion. We moved Mixer Direct back to Jeffersonville where they are adding some significant investment in jobs. And we had our first Chinese project announcement, that's the Lane Project, which is a hemp project. And we had an expansion from Bellico Castle Steel. And Denzo is a Japanese company that I was actually able to visit with in Japan. And I'm glad to say that they are in Indiana for the first time and in Jeffersonville for the first time. Page four, which is the next page, is an overview of all of the projects that we did, including those in Jeffersonville in 2019. And you'll see that we had 11 projects announced last year. Five of those were new companies in Clark and Boyd Counties and six of those were existing companies. And that next bar chart shows you where they fall from a municipal standpoint. And obviously Jeffersonville got the, had the biggest number of announcements, was six, last year. The next page, I'm showing you a breakout of those new jobs. And you will see that those 11 projects are creating over 1,500, almost 1,600 new jobs. That shows you how they break out in new companies and existing expansions. And then again, you see on that chart below that the majority of those, 1,058, were in Jeffersonville. Page six, the next page, shows that payroll number that I referenced earlier. You will see 86 million dollars in new annual payroll has been added in Southern Indiana last year from these projects. And 49 million dollars, 49.1 million dollars of that ended up in Jeffersonville. Again, I want to reiterate, this is an annual number. This is not just a one-time number. This happens every year. Next page, which is page seven, shows a larger picture of the capital investment that I mentioned. You'll see that 155 million dollars is being invested by those 11 projects in Southern Indiana. And again, 123 million dollars of that is in Jeffersonville. Now, the next page, on page eight, this is our return on investment. And I want to point out, this is really the only cumulative number, this one and the next one, that I'll be presenting. This, we, this is a simple calculation. We've taken every dollar that we have received to do economic development work. So this is excluding like our chamber member dues. It doesn't include that. These are monies that were dog ears explicitly for economic development. And we divided that by two numbers. The first number here is that capital investment number. And you will see that we have, for every dollar that's been invested in our economic development program, 198 dollars and 79 cents has been returned or created in that capital investment of all the projects that we've announced. And then the next number is that same capital, or same investor number that we've received for economic development. And we've divided that by the annual payroll generated from all of our projects that we've announced since 2006. And you will see that for every dollar invested, there's 78 dollars and 33 cents annually that's being created or injected into our local economy. So that's, that's a nice return on the investment. What do you think? The next page is sort of a synopsis of our current activity. We have 20, what we call hot projects in our pipeline. We have seen some effect from the COVID, but I will say that we are still receiving new projects in. And some projects have remained active, some have gone to active. And then, of course, we've had some that have sort of become inactive. But all in all, we still have right at 100, actually 101, active projects in our database. So these are projects that we, we have not deactivated because the company or the activities tell us that these projects are still at, in some stage of making a site location decision. So the next page is things that many of you may be aware of that we do. It's on the business attraction side of the economic development work that we do. And let me just say, we work in three areas in economic development. That's this, the new business attraction, that's existing business expansion and existing business retention. But that's really where we're focused in those three areas. And under new business attraction, I won't read this entire thing to you, but it's just sort of a bullet point of the activities that we do, including submitting Jeffersonville properties and buildings for projects that are looking for a location to cite, a new location, or to expand. Many times we have companies that are needing to expand and they, they're landlocked, but they just don't have the space. So we'll try to find them a space that works. Including in that is the domestic and international marketing. I won't go through this whole list, it's just a highlight. But we do spend a lot of time taking the Southern Indiana message on the road, telling people where we are, who we are, and why they should invest in our area. And I'm happy to say that we've had great success from doing that. I can point to several projects in Jeffersonville, including the Denzo Project, where we actually visited them on their turf and I hope persuaded them to make their decision to come here. Business retention and expansion or VR and E-work, that is actually where we see the majority of our announcements come from. The new projects, the new companies coming here for the first time, they tend to be this, you know, the headline grabbers, the sexy projects. But really, we know our bread and butter is going into our existing businesses and asking them basically three questions. How's business? Do you have any impediments to doing business? And do you have any plans to expand or grow? And whatever their answers are to those three questions, that becomes our work agenda. And we do lots of, I will say, sort of concierge type work. We, it depends on what the needs of the project are, or the needs the company are. And sometimes we get ahead of companies that are actually considering moving out or getting pressure to consolidate in another location. And we will make the case for them to do that here as opposed to somewhere else. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the work that we're doing with our Metro Manufacturing Alliance. These are our manufacturing members. They're a special category of membership for our organization, but they get lots of one-on-one attention, including breakout groups that they can, like HR or plant managers or things like that. I call it business therapy, but it's a great way for us to get ahead of any issues or challenges and also to make sure our businesses, that our manufacturers remain viable. So the next page, I'm going to be uncharacteristically quiet. And I'm going to turn this over to Wendy to talk about advocacy and regional economic development. But again, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you, Matt. We'll go ahead and talk about advocacy unless anybody wants to interject a question here. Okay, let's, let's talk about advocacy. One Southern Indiana does what we can to be the business voice in, mostly in Indianapolis. We do engage in some federal issues, not as many, we are not as effective. But on, at the state level, we've shown some effectiveness. And part of that is our ability to work with other associations and organizations. The Indiana Economic Development Association, we've worked with them on some tax increment financing policies. We also are involved with the Federation of Indiana Chambers and we engage in conversation that way. What it does is it helps us build coalitions that, so that when we have an issue in Southern Indiana that our businesses are facing, it gives us an opportunity to build a stronger coalition statewide and hopefully to see some movement. We did see movement in 2019 on an issue that was important to the medical profession. And that was Indiana was not part of what's called the Indiana, the Nurse License or Compact, meaning that a nurse who practices on one, in some states, could not, their license was not valid in other states. Kentucky was a part of that compact, Indiana was not. What that meant was when the Norton Consortium purchased the Clark Memorial, they could not deploy nursing staff to the need, depending on which side of the river, Kentucky or Indiana, their services were needed the most, which put them at a disadvantage. And for those of us that rely on public health care, it put us at a disadvantage as well. So we were able to, in two different session terms, get some, some notice of that issue, take it to the legislature. And as of 2019, Indiana did join the Nurse License or Compact. So that does ease that concern, that workforce concern for the folks that are managing both, not only the Clark Memorial Hospital, but also Baptist Floyd. So that was a positive piece for us. I'll move on to page 15, unless there are any questions on advocacy. But we talk about economic development and economic development is really, as Matt likes to say, it is a team sport. There are different ways to achieve economic development. And what is good for one community in our region is typically good for all of the communities in our region. So we've taken a regional approach, approach to economic development. You've heard me talk before about the Regional Development Authority. We did complete a regional development plan this year that was approved by the Indiana Economic Development Council in December. And that does give us some things to work towards. The four main areas of concern out of that, the regional plan, that's Clark, Floyd, Scott, Washington, and Jefferson Counties, the Madison area. Those areas of concern were regional broadband, regional collaboration, marketing and branding, and then trails. So a lot of things that different people would see as economic, economic drivers that, that affect the quality of life or quality of place here. And we're, we're starting to work into how, what our role is to push those ideas forward. We're also, as I mentioned, engaging with the state through not only the Indiana Economic Development Association, but several others. I'm finishing up my sixth year on the Board of IEDA and I'm chairing the Legislative Committee. So we are very much engaged, knowing what's taking place at the state level. We're also collaborating with other economic developers. The corridor from about Columbus South, the I-65 corridor, is an area that has been branded as the South Central Indiana Economic Development Group. And what that group does is it allows us to work on those regional assets that will attract a company, a Denzo, for instance, from Japan, who may be interested in a new U.S. operation. If we can get them interested in the southern, the south central part of the state, we're pretty confident that it will benefit the entire region. But also, we have a pretty good shot of bringing those to, to the Jeffersonville area. So that work has been very important. If you haven't seen our presentation on the Forador, that is a website and the Forador.com is on the screen. It is a website that really highlights those assets that we have, the Forador, the four Rs. Roads, rail, rivers, and runway. And so if you've heard Governor Holcomb, he's actually added a couple of other Rs in terms of rural broadband and recreational trails. We think we've got those covered too, but I think our Forador, he, he has been very kind to acknowledge that he stole that idea from us and we, we gave, we let him take it from there. I'll jump on down to page 16, a little bit of our brag sheet, just some of the things that, from One Southern Indiana's perspective, not only do we have Matt Hall, which puts us above all the other economic development organizations, we also have, have received our own share of awards and acknowledgements for the, the work that One Southern Indiana has done. With that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to open this piece of it to any questions you may have or the council may have. And then we can go into the Jeffersonville Sustains Report.
Any questions from the members?
Okay. If you have any, let me know either tonight or as a follow-up, either way is fine. Let's talk about Jeffersonville Sustains. 2019 numbers looked pretty good. And then all of a sudden, COVID-19 becomes a reality that causes what, what happened for the first time in, in modern history. Econo, or excuse me, public health policy, protecting public health, became the priority that caused an economic contraction. So think about that. For the first time in our lifetimes, of course, the public policy to protect people's health from the virus created this economic contraction. So businesses and others were all trying to figure out, what does this mean? How do we, how do we come together on this? And we are so fortunate to have a partnership with the City of Jeffersonville that created the program that, that you all funded and you all developed called Jeffersonville Sustains. When we first presented this to you, that the conversation was about the types of businesses that created the culture of which that Jeffersonville has. And the Jeffersonville Sustain, Sustains Program really did identify that. Through the allocation that you provided, you allowed up to $250,000 to go into this fund. What the Jeffersonville Sustains Program provided was the funding for business loans, forgivable business loans, up to $5,000 for companies located in the city of Jeffersonville. Now, we weren't sure how much interest we would have. We know through two other loan products that we worked on, we had interest from Jeffersonville businesses. And I've got some details on those if you're interested. But the Jeffersonville Sustains Program ended up having applications received and awarded 35 loans to those businesses. Now, not all of them took the full 5,000. In total, we were able to loan out $172,000 to Jeffersonville businesses. And that was through three different rounds. The last round closed a week ago today, so on June 8th, it closed on June 8th. Those applications were reviewed and three loans were granted from that one, bringing the total to 35 loans through this program. If you think about 35 small businesses that have the City of Jeffersonville to thank for some of those dollars that they needed at the time that they absolutely needed the most, because what we heard over and over was cash flow. That's what, what businesses needed was cash flow. You all were able to really make a difference for 35 different businesses and drew down, we drew down 172,000 of the 250 allocated for the loan program. Now, we will do whatever you would like. Our recommendation is that the additional 78,000 that is the balance, that we not draw that down and that we not issue another loan program, another round of that loan funding at this time. I'm not sure, I ask you to defer to your legal counsel, what, since we didn't draw down that 78, that additional 78,000, it's still there unless you, like, I don't know what your process would be for what to do with it. We're, our recommendation is that we not do any additional loan program, programming at this time. Reasons for that are pretty, pretty simple. First, businesses are starting to reopen. And their focus right now is on what it's going to take to keep their business operational long-term. We need them to focus on that, on that business plan. The second piece, I would say, is that some of the businesses that needed the money the most were also eligible for other programming, such as the federal program, the Paycheck Protection Program, PPP. Those businesses were able to find those type of funds and some of them who had made application for our loan programs chose not to accept our loans because they were going through PPP. So we also are recognizing that the number, not that the number of businesses out there don't, there aren't a number of businesses that still need some help. They're also now trying to figure out how to make it happen, how to make it work on their own. So our recommendation at this time is not to issue another round of funding through this program, but that is completely your decision. If you choose to do that, we will, by all means, open up another round. So, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report. If you have any, if anyone has specific questions for myself or Matt, please let us know.
Wendy, just per curate, how many, you all approved 35 loans, how many applied? Is y'all turning down?
Oh, Matt, I'm gonna need your help with this. The answer to your question, councilman?
It was, it was roughly, and I'm probably off by one or two, but I think it was 43 loans or applications that came through. Some were incomplete, they didn't complete their applications, but 43 asked for the link to the, to fill in the, you know, start logging up their documents.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a quick question for you, Wendy. Scott Hawkins here. When you guys give your numbers, for example, the number of Jeffersonville, 1,058 new jobs in 2019, is that? is that self-reported by those businesses? Like, how do you, how do you know that number?
Matt, I'm gonna let you talk through that process.
Sure, so the number, that number comes directly from the company's places. Their application for incentives to the state, if they're getting state incentives. Also, when they sign their acceptance letters, the wages and the jobs and the capital investment are identified in those acceptance letters. So they have to sign off on those numbers when they accept.
It's all, sorry, it's part of their commitment. They do make the commitment to hiring those numbers.
So, and when we say there's 1,058 new jobs in Jeffersonville, there could in fact be a great number more than that because they may, businesses may or may not have used your services or been in contact with you and filled out those forms, right?
Those are only, that's correct, those are only projects that we were involved in.
Gotcha. I just wanted to make sure what we were dealing with, what that number meant to people. So I just want to make it clear.
Right.
Thank you.
And in addition to that, Scott, I mean, those numbers come from some of the applications for the state benefits that they can apply for. But we also kind of take some accountability on the benefits that those businesses ask the city for. And if you remember in our last redevelopment meeting, we hired the Weeley Group to follow up with those numbers to make sure that those businesses are meeting their goals year after year and still qualify for those tax incentives. Any other questions for Wendy or Matt?
Well, I'd like to close-
Wendy, thank you and Matt both for-
I would just like to close by saying thank you. The partnership we have with the City of Jeffersonville has been fantastic. The results show that. We are fortunate to have this type of relationship with you, the council, and we can hope to continue that moving forward.
And I would just like to jump in and say, thank you all for being so great to work with on these projects and with these companies. Believe me, I hear nightmare stories from other communities where they don't get the support from the municipality for their projects, which I don't understand. So I do appreciate that everybody supports these businesses.
Mr. President, if I could?
Yes, sir, Mr. White.
If there's a will, I would like to sit down, or not sit down, but have a conversation with Wendy or Matt to see what were some of the common reasons some of those 43 companies didn't qualify? And maybe review our guidelines to see if it's something we would consider modifying or not.
We are very open to having that conversation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think if there's, especially since there's money left in the program, re-looking at those guidelines and seeing what disqualified some may be beneficial. Just want to emphasize again how much our partnership with One Southern Indiana means, not only on what they do annually to bring folks to Southern Indiana, but also in this instance where we've had this pandemic hit our community and we've been able to work together to get these funds out into small businesses. We took our time and we certainly weren't the first municipality to offer some assistance to local businesses. But we made sure that we crafted a program that made sense to us, made sense for our community. And then as soon as we had what we needed on paper, One Southern Indiana was able to execute that very quickly. So really appreciate you guys and your team, Wendy.
Thank you. Councilman White, I'll follow up-
If there's nothing else?
Thank you.
There's nothing else, we're gonna move on to number 11, which is Chief Kavanaugh. I believe we have Assistant Chief McVeigh on with us.
Thank you, President.
I'll let you go ahead and-
Thank you, I appreciate it. Basically, I'm here on behalf of the chief as is designated to address the council in regards to the implementation of our Body Cam program, our Body worn camera program for the City of Jeffersonville Police Department. With that being said, I believe we spoke to the council in different means over the course of the last several weeks. This program started in 2015 with trial and error phases with two different companies, one of which has been bought out recently by Axon. And based off the information I've given all of you over the last couple of weeks, I believe that is the best route for our police department to go to provide this equipment for our men and women that are out there doing the job every day. So if you all have any additional questions, I know there's not a vote tonight on the matter, but if you had any additional questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
You guys, Chief AC, have met everybody?
We have, we have met separately with all nine members of the councils, yes.
Were there any additional questions from the council? Okay, well, we are, we will need to get together as a council on the funding for at least the remainder of this year on that program. I think the chief laid out a five-year plan on how to implement this new program that I think is going to be much more well-suited for our department, according to their presentation. And we will come back with an additional appropriation request for the first year of that funding.
Matt?
Anything further?
Matt?
Yes?
I'm gonna put out there, I know when we look for funding, that we initially talked about taking some money out of Lloyd. And I know people might go look in the budget. If me and Heather talked on the phone about, Heather, help me out with the fund, I think it was one of the Q cap funds.
Q capital improvement, yes.
Yes, we believe that that fund may help pay the first round of payments with that. It has to go to the technology-based services for the city instead of tapping into Lloyd's reserves, which I feel that will be down significantly next year. Estimate, I think Heather gave me would be 35%. I would ask the council to look other ways to fund it and I think that may be appropriate fund. There's enough money in that fund to pay the this year's payment and next year's payment on that.
And then beyond that, after we get through that first two years, Chief McVeigh, I think we have some payments that are rolling off on some equipment that we could then reutilize for the remainder of this contract, is that correct?
That's correct. The next year will be the final payment on the radio upgrade that both police and fire entered into last year with Motorola. They replaced the nearly 12-year-old radios that we had. So we are, that will be payment number three of three in 2021, that'll be the final payment. So yes, we'll have that equipment payment adjusted in 2021 to meet the Body Cam needs.
Okay, and that'll come out of Lloyd at that point. We spoke, I spoke a couple of times with a couple of different members about the possibility of shortening that financing. We typically have made it known that we don't like to extend ourselves financially past our own terms. And a point that was made to me that I thought was a very good point was that we need to really consider this five-year financing so that this does extend beyond our, beyond our terms. That way, if there is a change, there is a system in place and it continues for our community. And I thought that was a point at least worth making, yeah.
I agree, Matt, and I would add to that that- Matt, I agree with your point and also would add to it that the plan that has been negotiated would allow for two upgrades during the five years. And paying that payment off earlier than five years may give some incentive for us not to get our upgrade in our final year of the fifth year. So it would be advantageous of us to keep that five-year agreement in place to ensure that we get that upgraded equipment.
That's correct. Council President, I also have the three-year plan that you requested. I can forward that to you or out the entire council if you like. And Mr. Maples is correct, in year three, we would, or year 2.5, we would see the new upgraded equipment as part of that five-year plan. And then in year five, also, we would receive new equipment, total replacement of all 75 cameras in both cases as part of that five-year agreement that we would sign with Axon.
You're muted, Scott.
How about now? Good?
There you go.
Yes, sir.
Right, I'm usually one of the people who speaks out against spending beyond our term. But in this case, I think it's very prudent of us to put this in place. I'd be for the five-year. In addition to that, thanks Scotty, I was gonna be Larry and gonna be the one that didn't want to spend it out of low it because that is gonna take such a dramatic beating in the not-too-distant future. So I'd be in agreement moving forward, so we'll know where people stand on this. I'd be for the fund you mentioned and the, and doing it for the five years.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thanks, AC. We'll move on then. Les Merkley, 2020 R7, which is the Bond Inducement Resolution for Vivera Senior Living of Jeffersonville.
Yes, you have in front of you a resolution which comes to you as a result of the Economic Development Commission. This is a mechanism that is allowed under state statute for a private developer to issue bonds for a tax benefit. There is no obligation to the city, it does not, the city's not on the hook for any dollars. It does not count against our debt limit. But since we do have an EDC, we are allowed to do this. Otherwise, they would have to go through the Indiana Economic Development Commission to issue these bonds. And I believe we do have representatives from Frost Brown Todd, who are here to represent the developers, which is a proposed senior living facility. It is on hand, it would be on Hamburg Pike across from Walnut Ridge. It's already approved, has already received all the required zoning approvals. So this is the last leg to make this development take off. So I will turn it over to representatives from Frost Brown Todd, I believe Bo Zeller and also Mr. Carr is here as well.
Mr. Carr?
Sure.
It should pick you up, yeah, it'll pick you up.
Good evening, appreciate the time this evening. My name is Matt Carr, I'm an attorney with Frost Brown Todd. I'm joined by, with my colleague here, Bo Zeller from Frost Brown Todd. Bo would be serving as bond counsel on this project. And then Jacob Brown from Marion Development Group, who's the lead developer on this project, is also on the call as well. Some background on this, this is a senior housing project that is targeted for those seniors in need of assistance with the activities of daily living through our low and moderate income and cannot afford traditional market rate assisted living. I believe we were all provided with a slide presentation. I'll quickly go through that slide presentation, just kind of highlight the main points. First page of the presentation is one of the summaries of the project. Second page in is some information about the lead developer, Marion Development Group. Marion is based in Louisville, Kentucky. Has been involved in development activity for over 20 years. Marion has a similar project by Vera Senior Living of Columbus that is now under construction in the city of Columbus and will open later this year. That project also received a issuance of tax incentive by us through the city of Columbus. Third page in, some overview of the project. Again, it's a senior housing facility for low and moderate income seniors. 130 assisted living units. Couple unique features about this, one being the occupancy will be subject to income restrictions. Secondly, the Indiana's Aids and Medicaid, Aids Disabled Medicaid waiver for assisted living services will be available to all residents of the facility. This time, we're anticipating this to be approximately a $31 million project in terms of overall investment and development costs. Approximately $20 million in construction costs and up to $23 million in tax bonus. Market study for this project was completed by Valerie Cretschmann Associates. Valerie is extremely conservative on these types of projects and she is showing a market demand for 188 units, which is well in excess of what is planned here. Page four, facility overview. This will be both a licensed residential care facility and a certified Medicaid waiver provider in the state of Indiana. Get four stories, 130 units, a mix of studio units and one-bedroom units. The resident profile, residents will have to be 62 and older. Again, low to moderate income, cannot live independently and need help with activities of daily living. What we typically see in a project like this is an average age of 82 upon residency. And while those that are 62 and over would qualify to reside in the facility as long as they meet the income requirements, typically a project like this would just be those that are 75 and older. They would really be the targeted population for this facility. Page five, facility overview, lists the number of apartment features and also amenities and services. Fairly standard features and services that you probably all are accustomed to in terms of what an assisted living facility would provide. Three meals a day, transportation, laundry service. Unlike market rate facilities, however, these services are all inclusive. So there's not different service levels or sacking of fees that you sometimes will see in an assisted living facility. So whether someone is on Medicaid and having their assisted living services reimbursed through Medicaid or whether they're private pay, they're gonna pay the same amount for all these services and amenities. Page six, the need for affordable assisted living. Approximately 70% of seniors cannot afford market rate assisted living. 60% of those aged 75 and older have income, income of less than $35,000 a year. And that would be the target populated, the target income range for this facility. Two-thirds of seniors have at least two chronic health conditions. 20 to 40% of seniors could be better and more often effectively cared for in an assisted living facility, a nursing home. Indiana ranked 51st out of all the, out of all the states in the District of Columbia in its 2017 study that was carried out by AARP Foundation, SCAM Foundation, the Commonwealth Fund. And that was a ranking of 51st in terms of offering seniors different housing and services options. It's been stated in the Indiana policy, even before that study came out, to work towards rebalancing the housing and care for seniors in this state. the housing and care for seniors in the state to shift seniors away from institutional care and more into home community based services such as assisted living. Page seven. Indiana is one of a few states that adequately supports affordable assisted living for low and modern income seniors with the Medicaid waiver. Slide seven shows the Indiana assisted living Medicaid rates and also shows the Indiana's average daily Medicaid rate for nursing home residents. And you you'll see there that the Medicaid rates are between 70 and 90 per dollar a day. Average nursing home rate for daily rate is in excess of $200 a day. So significant savings to both state of Indiana and the federal government in terms of having more of these seniors in assisted living facility. Many state local government agencies have supported these developments in a number number of different ways, including the the tax and the bonus. Slide eight, low and capacity tax credit financing for affordable assisted living facilities. There are at this point in excess of 30 of these facilities that have been, they're now open, under construction, in pre financing or in development right now throughout the state of Indiana. And that's really been over the last five years. With the exception of two of those projects, all the rest of them have been financed through the low and commodity tax credit program. And in particular, the 4% program, which is a non competitive program. Indiana has 20 of 4% tax credits. The only caveat with the 4% program is that at least 50% of the development costs have to be taxed at bonds. I mentioned income earlier in terms of the income restrictions. This would be for residents up to 80% of very immediate income. I don't have that in front of me right now, but I suspect in Jeffersonville, that's probably high 30,000, maybe low 40,000 in terms of terms of income. So again, looking at a population of those seniors in their 75 plus, more than likely 90 plus percent of seniors in Jeffersonville are gonna qualify to live in this facility. We'll be a 15 year initial tax credit compliance period and a 15 year extended low income housing commitment. So this project will be committed to low command, I think, tax credit services for for 30 years. Services for Medicaid eligible residents, once again, will be reimbursed through Indiana's age and disabled Medicaid waiver. For those residents that do not qualify for Medicaid but desire to live in the facility, they would be what we call spend down a private pay. They'll generally pay higher rates until they exhaust their assets and they become Medicaid eligible to reside in the facility. Slide nine. The tactics of bond financing and unless Matt mentioned this, the key here is that city of Jeffersonville, there's no liability for the payment on the bonds. The issue has no effect on Jefferson's Jeffersonville's credit rating. And also has no effect on the bond volume capacity of Jeffersonville. Bond volume capacity is kind of the state of Indiana. Slide 10 is a little bit about about the team. A couple links to point out here. Anticipated management entity would be Guarded Management Solutions. Guarded is one of the largest operators of affordable assisted living projects in the country, and they're actually managing the majority of these facilities in the state of Indiana. Contractor, general contractor here would be the Weber Group, based in New Albany. The expectation would be that in terms of subcontracting services that that Weber Group would would work towards providing as many opportunities as possible to local Jeffersonville based contractors. Page 11 is the site location at 2105 Hamburg Pike. Slide 12 is the site overview. Slide 13 is the site plan. Beginning on slide 14. And slides 15, 16, 17, and 18 are all preliminary renderings. Slide 19. Is the floor plans, two different floor plans for the one bedroom units. Slide 20 is a floor plan for the studio units. Slide 21. Benefits of this project to the city of Jeffersonville. Will involve the three different categories, one being permanent job creation. Upon stabilized occupancy, we anticipate 40 to 40, 50 full time jobs at the facility. And a payroll of approximately $2 million per year. Secondly, this will create the temporary job creation through the construction related jobs. Estimated approximately 300 construction jobs. Then finally, and most importantly, this project should provide at least $1 million in annual charity community benefit to the city based upon the dilution or reduction in revenue to the facility from the willingness of the developer and owner of the facility to accept Medicaid waiver for reimbursement for the assisted living services. Slide 22, summary. Again, development and construction of approximately $31 million facility. Four stories, 130 apartment units. Assisted living services will be eligible for reimbursement through Indiana's age and disabled Medicaid waiver. That'll help with the assistance of that of activities of daily living. High demand for affordable assisted living here in Jeffersonville and then experienced development team and manager. With that, if anyone has any questions on the project?
I have one question. Now, what would be your just the projected completion date? Just an idea.
I believe we were looking at construction start possibly early fall, maybe around October 1st. And then that would put completion January or February of 2022. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Do you have a resolution number?
Resolution number seven.
There's no other questions. I make a motion to approve 2020 OR or R seven.
Motion by Mr. Maples and a second by Mr. Burns. Anything further? All right, Ms. Gill.
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counselperson Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Cross.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counselperson Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on, 10 minutes half 2020 OR 29 is an ordinance transferring funds within a certain department, within the same department, rather. If I remember correctly, we're moving some funding out of a purchase line for equipment for the sanitation department into a lease fund because they had to lease some extra garbage trucks through the initial hit of the pandemic. We had some equipment go down and we could not purchase new equipment quickly enough. They had to go ahead and rent something while we were, get us through at least those first couple of months. But they're taking that money out of the line item that we appropriated earlier in the year for new equipment. And Ms. Gill, will you remind me of that number?
The 2020 OR 29.
And the amount?
The amount is 53,200.
Heather, did I get that right? Was there anything further?
Yes, that was all correct.
Okay. So we'll need a motion on the first and second reading. So motion, Mr. Maple, second, Mr. Croft. Ms. Gill?
Counselperson White.
Aye.
Counselperson Burns.
Aye.
Counselperson Paris.
Aye.
Counselperson Vice President Maples.
Aye.
Counselperson Cross.
Aye.
Counselperson Webb.
Aye.
Counselperson President Owen.
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins.
Aye.
Counselperson Ellis.
Aye.
Nine zero.
All right. That's all we have on the agenda tonight. We go to attorney comments. Mr. Merkley, we'll go with you first this time. Anything from your end?
I have no comment.
All right, Mr. Wilder.
Lee, first of, you know, now that we're on TV, I talk all the time, right? First, I wanted to emphasize that the importance, the AM information was provided by the Jeffersonville Police Department. Wanted to say that I practice as trial work, as you all know, and I've been involved in cases where body cameras, when they exist, are usually factor that is most favorable for the government. And having body cameras on the officers are great for many reasons. It's, there's nothing wrong. Secondly, I do want to say that tonight, my wife and I had an opportunity to have action with two Jeffersonville police officers. Young man was screaming through the neighborhood, hit a mailbox, hit another vehicle. And there were two young officers I didn't know. They were professional. They showed up seeing there were other. They were great at the job. And they actually had had previous interaction with the individual who he was before they left. There were sirens to the house where this was. So, you know, in light of everything that's in the world today, I will say that body cameras are great and we've got a police force and that's all I've got to say.
Okay. Other department heads, Heather, did you have anything additional?
No, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel to public, Mr. White.
No comment.
All right, Mr. Burns.
Mr. Wilder, Mr. Merkley, is it, are we doing, did I see today, this is gonna continue, we're on Zoom till July 15th now? Is that what I saw? No?
No, I think the current order is right now through July 3rd. Yes, but I, we're waiting to see what the governor does at that time, so.
I guess for you, the council, in considering whether the potential is that we go back to the live meetings in the chambers, probably there needs to be Mr. Owen as the president. Just kind of look around the room and figure out how you're gonna maintain social distancing. Don't go away, is it, let?
No, I, you know, that that's something everyone needs to keep in mind is that, you know, just because the mayor or the governor is lessening the regulations or what we can do, what we cannot do. Everything that he does, it still says subject to social distancing. So if for some reason we are not allowed to continue the virtual meetings beyond July 3rd, we're going to have to figure out how we're gonna conduct meetings and still comply with social distancing. So my my feeling is I believe he might continue that, to allow the virtual meetings beyond July 3rd, but he hasn't consulted with me, so.
You don't, oh, I don't return most people's calls, except my wife's, so.
Nothing more.
Anything else, Mr. Burns?
No, thank you.
All right, Mr. Paris.
No comment.
All right, Mr. Maples.
No comment.
Mr. Croft?
I just want to thank Mr. Carr, Mr. Zeller, that was informative and I appreciate it very much. That's all.
All right, Mr. Webb.
I'd like to thank the police department. I think they did a great presentation on the body cams. I think it'll help the police department and our citizens. Also, too, I'd like to thank the fire department. I saw them on this side of my left going down to the water. And to my right, I saw them on a run. So they're heavily at work, but they got a good day out there on the river to go on a run. So that's all. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ellis.
No comment.
Mr. Hawkins.
No comment.
All right, just want to say thanks to the police department for taking the time to meet with each of us on the body cams. We'll say that this is something that Chief Kavanaugh brought up early on in the year because of the buyout of our current body cam provider. And we're glad to be getting a new and better product for more of our officers and hopefully we can get that all rolling in our next meeting for that finding. If there's nothing else, take a motion to adjourn.
No, ma'am.
Gentlemen, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.